Good evening, Board and Pender County Schools Community. My name is Brandon McPherson. I have the honor of serving as the Board Attorney for the Pender County Board of Education. Tonight, we have several exciting things that are happening. The first of which is the swearing-in of our newest member and our re-swearing-in of a re-elected member. At this point, I would like to turn over the swearing-in to the Honorable Judge Kent Harrell.
Good evening. It is always a privilege for me, and it's one of the fringe benefits of this job, is to be able to swear in other elected officials in Pender County. So it's a privilege for me to be here tonight. I'm especially honored to swear in these two. If you know Tommy or you know Don, I mean, these are lifelong Pender County people. So to have folks like this serving on this board is a real honor for this community, and they're gonna make sure that they do what's best for the citizens of Pender County. So it's a privilege for me to be able to be a part of this tonight. Tommy, if you'll come on up, please. Let's see, let me grab... If you would place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, or if you want your wife to hold it. Okay? Raise your right, and repeat after me. "I state your name..."
Aye, Tom Reeves.
"...solemnly swear..."
Solemnly swear.
"...that I will support and maintain..."
I will support and maintain.
"...the Constitution and laws..."
Constitution and laws.
"...of the United States..."
Of the United States.
"...and the Constitution and laws..."
And the Constitution and laws.
"...of the State of North Carolina..."
And the State of North Carolina.
"...not inconsistent therewith..."
Not inconsistent therewith.
"...and that I will faithfully discharge..."
And I will faithfully discharge.
"...the duties of my office..."
The duties of my office.
"...as a member of the Pender County Board of Education."
As a member of the Pender County Board of Education.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Tom, if you'll come over here and sign these real quick. Yeah, that's fine. There's also an ethics thing right there that you'll need to sign. Mr. Hall? If you would place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, repeat after me. "I state your name..."
Aye, Donald Hall.
"...do solemnly swear..."
Do solemnly swear.
"...that I will support and maintain..."
That I will support and maintain.
"...the Constitution and laws..."
Constitution and laws.
"...of the United States..."
Of the United States.
"...and the Constitution and laws..."
And the Constitution and laws.
"...of the State of North Carolina..."
State of North Carolina.
"...not inconsistent therewith..."
Not inconsistent therewith.
"...and that I will faithfully discharge..."
That I will faithfully discharge.
"...the duties of my office..."
The duties of my office.
"...as a member of the Pender County Board of Education."
As a member of the Pender County Board of Education.
Congratulations. Dr. Bree Love, members of the Board, thank you.
Thank you, Judge Harrell. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge Harrell, and welcome to you, Mr. Reeves. All right. I'd like to extend a personal thank you to Ms. Gardner for keeping us all straight with the signing of all the necessary documents. Thank you, Ms. Gardner, so much.
Thank you.
At this time, consistent with Board policy 2200 Election of Officers, this is the organizational meeting of the Board of Education. This is the time when the Board elects both their Chair and their Vice Chair. The logical next step, and the quickest way to get me off of this microphone, is to open the floor for nominations of Chairperson of the Pender County Board of Education. Are there nominations?
I would like to nominate Beth Burns for Chairperson.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
I make a motion to close nominations.
Motion to close nominations? Is there a second?
A second to motion.
Second to motion. All those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Okay. Now that nominations are closed, all those in favor of Ms. Burns as your Chairperson, please say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Congratulations, Ms. Burns. You are now the Chairperson of the Pender County Board of Education.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I will turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we have one more matter of business to attend to, and that would be the nominations for our Vice Chair. And at this time, I would like to nominate Don Hall. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have any more nominations? Okay, can we have a motion to close nominations?
Make motion to close nominations.
With a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. The nominations have been closed. All in favor of Mr. Hall for our Vice Chair? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Hall. Okay. Good evening. This meeting of the Pender County Board of Education is now called to order. A quorum has been determined, and at this time, we will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and our National Anthem, led by the Malpas Corner Elementary School Chorus, under the direction of Ms. Cassandra Barnes. You can be seated. Thank you, everyone. That was lovely, and thank you so much, Malpas Corner Elementary School, for sharing all that talent with us tonight. Onto our invocation, but before we call up Mr. Ben Horrell from Burgal Baptist Church to lead us in our invocation, I would ask that everyone stand and give a moment of silence for Pender County school employee that we lost this past week, Ms. Heather Fennell. Okay, thank you. And at this time, Mr. Horrell, if you would like to come up and give us our invocation, with everyone, please remain standing.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the season we are in, giving and receiving gifts from one another. Thank you for the servants and their desire to make our community better. Give them the wisdom to protect the weak and bring strength and honor to their positions. Help us all be a shining light, like our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
I was asked to share, real quick, I was born and raised in Pender County, graduated Pender High in 1989, and I know it sounds old now, but I just wanted to share one of our ministries. I'm an associate pastor at Burgal Baptist, and I worked in the grocery business for 30 years, and then I got the full-time call in 2018 to be a minister. And one of the ministries I want to share with you is working in the schools. We partner with several churches, businesses, and individuals to raise money, and I just wish you could see their faces. We bring the Chick-fil-A. And, you know, they're just very, very gracious in letting us do that. Two high schools and four middle schools. We get to the privilege of meeting these kids and coaches and teachers, and I just want to just share that with you guys to encourage you, that, you know, there are some good kids out there. Man, there's some good kids. And I know a lot of times, you know, we see things on the news or whatever from other places, but I just want to encourage you that these kids are trying. They really are trying. Not just sports teams, but through Fellowship Christian Athletes and through these other teachers. I mean, we've got some awesome teachers in our county. And I just want to just encourage you and let you know that, that God is moving in such a way that, you know, we can see Him every day in a child, in a team, in a teacher, in a coach. And these coaches, you gotta give it to them, stay in there all day and all night with these kids and giving everything they got. So I just want to share that with you, just to encourage you, and thank you for supporting them, because I know it takes all of us together to create an environment where our kids can learn, but also where they connect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for the direction you're giving our students. We truly appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, at this time, we will be working on the adoption of the agenda, Board members. At this time, does anyone have any questions about the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to add Item 11.4, air mark.
Okay, that would be on the action agenda?
Yeah, I don't anticipate any action, but just in case we need it for there.
Yes, sir.
Probably only information.
Okay, do we have a motion to amend the agenda and the proposed change?
I make a motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Thank you. And the agenda is approved. Okay, at this time, Dr. Hill, oh, Dr. Hill, Dr. Bree Love will be, will be, you're not the only one who is nervous. At this time, Dr. Bree Love will be handling our recognitions.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. All right, so tonight, we have just one set of recognitions, and that is for the Pender County Schools Holiday Card Contest winners from across the district. And I just want to congratulate our students who will be receiving awards tonight in recognition for their holiday artwork, which were chosen by the Board of Education. That's a tradition here at Pender County Schools. We had dozens of entries across the board. I walked in and I saw the tables covered with entries, and only six were selected. So I want to congratulate our students, I want to congratulate all students for entering the contest. It's very special for our district, and certainly want to congratulate those that we'll recognize tonight. Each student will receive a certificate from Pender County Schools, as well as a sack of the holiday cards with their own artwork on them. Those holiday cards are sent all over the State of North Carolina, I send them to other superintendents across the state. We obviously share them with local businesses that support Pender County Schools. We use them all over, and so I want to congratulate the students, and just know that your artwork is being mailed all over the place across Pender County. And so we'll call each student up, one at a time, and Board members, if I could have you come around, what we'll do is, I'll ask the student to tell what school, who's with them, because some of them have their art teacher, and some of them have their principal, or both. And then grade level, and then a little bit about their art, you know? Why did they choose the scene that they did in their artwork? And so I'm going to start off with Abigail Smith. Hey, Abigail, thank you for being here. Congratulations. All right, and so with us, we have a certificate, and we have some good artists, okay? And if you could turn, and just tell us a little bit about the scene that you chose for your artwork.
I just like, I don't know, we really got like contrast, like colors merged, like thought like, thought I could just do like houses, like.
Okay. It's a beautiful scene, and you can see it here. It is, it's a fantastic scene. What a great piece of art. And we are certainly glad to display this and share that with others. So if I could have the Board count, and we will get some pictures, okay? And who's with you tonight? Mr. Allen, who's the principal, so thank you, Mr. Allen, for being here as well. All right, Jasmine Morales. Heidi Draft, high school. Congratulations. All right, here's the certificate, and your class. And who's with you tonight? Mr. Hudson, who's the principal? Thank you, Mr. Hudson, for being here. So what grade are you in? Okay, and tell us a little bit about the piece of art that you chose.
As a kid, I used to watch the Polar Express, and my teacher would give us hot cocoa with marshmallows, and a little bit of macaroni cookies as well.
And to say, well, you're a great artist, by the way. And so congratulations to you. All right, Board members? You can get a picture. All right, board members, give a picture.
Hello?
Do you have your family? Come on in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Geneva Streeter.
Congratulations, Geneva. Ms. Robinson, your principal? All right, here's your certificate. And, yeah, we'll hold it in there so we can, so what grade are you in?
Fourth.
And you're at North Thompson? All right, and so tell us a little bit about your artwork.
Well, I just wanted to do a digital management so now because it was a Christmas date.
Okay, you did a fantastic job, so congratulations. All right, and board members, now family, would you like to join us? Who else is there? Okay. Congratulations. Thank you so much. All right, next we have Geneva Streeter. Congratulations, Geneva. Ms. Robinson, your principal? All right, here's your certificate. And, yeah, we'll hold it in there so we can, so what grade are you in?
Fourth.
And you're at North Thompson? All right, and so tell us a little bit about your artwork.
Well, I just wanted to do a digital management so now because it was a Christmas date.
Okay, you did a fantastic job, so congratulations. All right, and board members, now family, would you like to join us? Who else is there? Okay. Congratulations. Thank you so much. All right, from Malpas Corner Elementary, we have Eliza Salzar Batista. So we've got Ms. Ellington, your principal with you, and, yeah, your teacher, Ms. Box. All right, so tell us a little bit about your artwork.
So I was founded on, I really liked gingerbread houses, so I decided to put gingerbread houses around, like, like in the snow, and then I really loved the kids.
I love it, and I like the smoke coming out of the chimney. It puts it in the spirit, right? Nice job. All right, board members. Congratulations. All right, Service City Mill. What grade are you in?
I'm a second.
What grade? Congratulations. There you go. Perfect. And who is with you?
My teacher, Ms. Borgo, and Ms. Hall.
So Ms. Borgo and Ms. Hall, thank you very much. And so tell us a little bit about your artwork.
Um, I decided to do a beach scene because I love the beach, and my family does too, and they represent our schools.
It's, it's, obviously, having the beach there, it's, it's different because you don't think of the beach when you think about the holidays and that with snow and all that. So we really enjoyed that piece of artwork, so thank you for doing that. All right, thank you. And let's get to it.
Board members? Mom, Dad?
Yes.
I didn't leave this episode earlier.
And that is Olivia Brown from Pender Lee School. And receiving her award will be her principal, Mr. Stephen Harris. And Mr. Harris, I will make sure that I make it out there to congratulate her and really appreciate her artwork. You know, standing there telling us a little bit about the moment. No, great job, totally great job. Thank you very much. So that's it.
Okay, thank you.
So once again, thank you to all of our art winners and just very proud of you. What a great moment for Pender County Schools. Thank you.
Our next agenda item is public comment, and tonight, we did not have any call-ins nor sign-ups. So, let's see, so we're going to move right along to the information agenda. Mr. Kevin Taylor.
Morning, board members. Congratulations, Ms. Burns.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hall, Mr. Spivey, Mr. Reeves, I won't leave anybody out. So this, a real quick update, I just wanted to let you know, back in November, we discussed a potential update to policy 4316, which is the dress code policy. We are working through that currently. We've had meetings with APs and principals to discuss some different drafts of what we have out there. Our next steps are to put it in front of the students, which will be in January. We don't want to interfere with any kind of exams or things of that nature right now. Then staff, and then parents. So our goal is to put something together that, that mirrors what we work through in society now. The last time the policy was updated, I think, was 2012. So it's just, it's outdated, needs to be updated. So we're working through that right now. Happy to take any questions that you guys have about the process or anything like that, but there's more to come in the future.
We'll implement that in January is kind of when we want to start.
We won't implement it in January, no, sir, Mr. Spivey. We'll, we'll start to get some additional feedback from parents and students and staff during that time. Yeah.
And then we'll probably look at shortly directly after that, depending on how it plays out.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Just a quick update on the strategic plan. We had our most recent strategic plan meeting in December, the committee meeting that met. Just to kind of go through a couple of the timeframe, you guys have seen this slide before. Essentially, we're still in that first phase of that. We're finishing that up. We have finished the questionnaires. We have finished the focus groups, at least these focus groups for now. Again, our next step in this process is to identify the themes, which we started to do. I'll share some of those with you. During that February month, we will have additional focus groups where, as I said before in one of the previous presentations, we want to make sure we captured what we needed to capture. So those next focus groups will take the themes and the potential identified items that we will be looking at for strategic plan, and we'll go over those to make sure we did capture what we need to. And then that final phase is during the warmer months of the spring semester, where we start to write the actual goals themselves, the strategies, and also establish the metrics that we use to measure. And that's the important, the most important component to that, action planning and metrics. The next slide talks about the representative of student demographics, and I'll share with you in a minute how many students we have. So pretty, we're happy with what we received in terms of the population breakdown based on demographic data. This is the community questionnaire. We had 4,450 responses. Our goal was 3,500, based on traditional trends of surveys and responses that we get. So we far exceeded that. And this is the section that describes how many staff and students that we received. We're really happy about the 1,500 student responses that we received. They're the reason why we're doing this. So their voice is super important when we plan this out. In terms of community and staff, you can see they kind of mirror one another. Those are not terribly far off from what our demographics look like in the county. Obviously, we could have a little bit more representation from a certain number of groups, but, and we'll get some of that later on. Community questionnaire, this is the feeder pattern. If identified, there were several on here identified in red that didn't refer to saying, and that is right here on this particular piece of the bottom. Again, three representative of our school's feeder patterns. Also has, obviously, the biggest feeder pattern we have, and that represents the majority of the, of the responses that we did receive. We also continued with focus groups throughout the process of collecting survey data. Nineteen total focus groups, 107 participants. Several of those were, if you look here at the parent focus groups, teachers, principals, staff, and students. We were very happy to get three student panels in there. We thought we weren't going to be able to get those in until we had the second round of focus groups, but it helped to really drive some of the information that we received. And this is the breakdown by role. Central office, students is the blue section there, so we'll have some more of the student input moving forward. As I mentioned, these are some of the emerging themes. I won't read this entire slide to you, it's kind of wordy, but I wanted to make sure that the public had this on the website to go and look at. Obviously, the themes, high-quality instruction, supporting and recruiting staff, infrastructure that continues to grow with the community, school culture of belonging, physical and emotional safety for students, parent communication, career and college readiness, and support for special populations. Those are the main eight buckets that we identified. The groups I'm working with, if you've never been through a qualitative survey, they actually code all the verbal responses and all of the written responses that we received, and everything has a code and theme. So some of the other ones that were notable mentions are at the bottom, which you guys can see there. Extracurriculars, curriculum, grading, and attendance policies made the list. So these are lacquer questions. So on the survey itself, there were seven or eight, seven lacquer questions. And these are student agreement, staff agreement, and community agreement. DCS, I don't, I can't, I'm going to read them to you, but the basic premise of the first one is academic goals, high-quality teachers and staff, buildings, safe space, families are welcome and engaged, elected programs and extracurricular opportunities within the schools. Again, these are all on a recurring basis throughout the, throughout the questionnaires. What is driving success in Pender County Schools? The yellow highlights are the top three in each column. The columns are broken down by students, staff, community, and total. We didn't obviously do the top three on the total. Teacher quality, academic rigor, communication, those are things that are driving success within, within the Pender County Schools. Some of the things that were noted on the survey, there are limiting success, overcrowding, transportation, recruiting and retaining teachers, discipline. The students have some outliers, I would say, who are, these are things that they have determined were limiting their success in relationships and workload. They have a little bit different perspective on the data that was shared through them. Our next steps, refine the draft of the vision and mission, which we worked on, and core values, which we worked on in December, our December strategic plan meeting. January, present a draft of those vision, mission, and core values to the board. So hopefully by January, we'll have that to present to you as part of the slideshow. Steering Committee number three meeting will be late January, and then the goal strategies and developmental session will be in February. So if you go back at the timeline, which I won't do, we're hitting that middle phase when a lot of the internal work is done. We've done a good job, I think, of bringing in as many outside perspectives as we can. You know, our survey response, just, you know, to kind of compare the three-tiered bus system, we had about a thousand responses on that. So with 4,500, I feel comfortable that we captured a good bit of the information out there. Any questions from the board?
Okay, I think that's about it. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Next is 9.3, facilities assessment.
As Mr. Gerganus comes up to the podium, I'd like to begin by extending my gratitude to our Chief Operations Officer, Mr. Russ Gerganus, for his exceptional work on our facilities assessment over the past several months. Mr. Gerganus has demonstrated remarkable dedication and adaptability since joining our district. While familiarizing himself with our operations team, our resources, our district processes, he simultaneously undertook a, really a critical task and crucial task for Pender County Schools in conducting the comprehensive facilities assessment at the same time. This assessment provides us with invaluable insights into the current conditions and future needs of our school buildings, one of which have, has been serving our community for over a century. Furthermore, Mr. Gerganus has taken on additional responsibility of overseeing construction of our new K-8 school in Hampstead. His ability to manage multiple high-priority projects across our system, still in the process of, while still in the process of acclimating himself to his new role, is commendable. The detailed analysis that Mr. Gerganus will present this evening is a result of onsite visual inspections and careful evaluations of maintenance data. This work will be instrumental in our long-term planning, helping us prioritize projects and make informed decisions about the facilities moving forward. So, Mr. Gerganus, thank you very much for the work that you've done so far, and the floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, board. So this is the kind of stuff I kind of get excited about, you know, obviously, it was hard to do, so I've made some notes to kind of keep me on track, because I could talk to you to probably levels, you probably would be like, okay, you can just stop. So here, being here for two months, just, you know, drinking from the fire, fire hoes, trying to, you know, get familiar with all the schools, the locations, and how to drive to each and every one of them. This facilities assessment, you know, thinking about what is the purpose of a facilities assessment, is to evaluate basically the current conditions of our schools. And this assessment, for this presentation purpose, is to inform decision-makers as the Board of Education about the needs that we have in our facilities, the challenges associated with those needs, and the opportunities that we have on the horizon. Dr. Bree Love mentioned we're building a new school in three years, August 2027, maybe two years, that, that school will be open and ready to serve our students. So again, this is just a brief overview of our presentation, assessment of our facilities. And the approach to this was, just like Dr. Bree Love said, for the first two months, I've been in the schools doing onsite visual inspections. This does not stop here. So this approach is going to be multiple years, it's going to take a lot of data. We, I think it's a personal thing to define goals when you start thinking about a facilities assessment. Defining those goals and generating those goals comes along with collecting and analyzing a lot of the data. So maintenance work orders, you know, prior assessments that's been done, we've had some reviews of some of the HVAC equipment, the facility need surveys that's due every five years, and guess what? We've got another one coming up, so we're right on time. And assess the needs. This is capacity. We're growing. You're going to see a list of schools. We hope that that list gets longer and longer and longer, and we continue to serve our students in the area. The compliance within those schools and deferred maintenance, where we may have budget constraints and what those are, identify them if they become a capital need at this point. So some of the assessment goals, establishing those, is long-term planning. You, you got to plan to be able to execute any project successfully. So we prioritize- So, we prioritize those based on needs. It may be urgent, safety code issues, high priorities that affects core education delivery. I think about infrastructure failing, roof leaks that could alter, you know, the failure of HVAC. If I'm hot and HVAC equipment quit, I'm going to be a little agitated, so it will cause disruption in schools. Medium priority, low priority. So, we also want to develop a project team. This project team is not only myself, but it's a village. And I think about One Pender in that, because we have this, what you'll see is, we got a project team, the director of construction, director of maintenance, we got maintenance employees, we got transportation to get the kids to and from schools, we got child nutrition that feeds our schools, technology, and we're One Pender. And I think about that, because these projects, as we define what these goals are, we got to be able to execute these projects and the leadership and working with schools and principals of what activities and what summer programs we have at certain schools, when can these projects be done? And, you know, aligning ourselves with the growth of the county. So, some of these project team members may be outside consultants, design teams that results from RFQs for the designing of new schools, and then those construction team members that we hire on, if they are selected from a bid opportunity to do the work. So, the last goal is important, is develop a capital improvement plan and follow it. That follow it is important, but also it's a living document, so things change. Things move up in the priority list, things get pushed back as, you know, budget flows go up and down, and needs change. And then what this does is it supports the funding requests. So, by establishing all these projects, it is the backup documentation that we need to go to the county with to say, hey, here's X, Y, and Z, X, Y, and Z, and this is how, this is what it is, and we were planning on attacking those projects. So, here's a list of all of our schools, just schools. Some fun facts, our principals are the managers of some of the largest facilities within our school district, if you think about it. We got almost 2 million square feet just under roof that are just schools alone, totaling about 835 acres of land. Oldest is over 107 years old. Down to Surf City was the latest school six years ago, and obviously, we're building a new K-8. So, we're going to circle back to this slide, because some of the key findings, you'll see I'll touch on some of the similarities that I found as I inspected the different schools. So, key items to a facility assessment, hey, I love construction, it's building envelope, interior spaces, HVAC systems, all the mechanical trades, structural components, life safety features, the fire alarms, building systems, equipment, and site exterior. So, what I want to really kind of like dive into is life cycles. I'll say this a couple of times, that we try to do maintenance on certain things, but everything has its life cycle. This is your unit in your house, it's no different unit at school. One just may last longer, because it's a commercial unit. So, when you look at the building envelope, here's a few pictures from some schools, that they're our schools, that I went around, took a couple of pictures on. We have corrosion on some door and windows, the loss of caulking, the swelling, some of the steel that's out on the coast, it rust expands. That corrosion will carry over into HVAC, you'll see some pictures of that. We have some roofs that are in some type of condition where we've replaced them at some point in time, or we're at another need. And how do we approach that? This is, the bottom down is a few pictures from the school, from not only the air, but the multiple repairs that we have made across its life since it was constructed. Some key findings on some facility conditions on the interior. We have, you know, we're looking at flooring, walls, partitions, lighting, and when schools are constructed, the turnover process is attic stock, along with operational manuals and stuff of things that are, you know, handed over to the school system. But when that attic stock gets depleted, that depleted goes, it goes away. So, then, we try to continue to maintain, but if we don't have the same tile that was installed, you know, installed in a certain year, it's obsolete. We have to think about long-range planning. If we don't plan for that, we can't ever roll out a new floor in a certain school. So, what you have is some maintenance items that are maybe deferred, or whatever they are, but they are now a capital painting project, they're a capital flooring project. We have some carpet and media centers that are years and years and years old. We have lighting that now has crack, we don't have the lenses anymore. We can look at the, you know, the upgrading these as energy-efficient items. And just all things considered, we need to start putting some of these items on a plan. So, again, I'm going to touch on that life cycle. When we talk about HVAC equipment, everything runs into its life, in life. The old R22 system seemed to last a lot longer than some of this new gas and refrigerant and some of the newer equipment. What's unique about this is our buildings are very complex, they're complex units. It takes control systems to operate and tell the units when to come on. We dehumidify, we got run boilers and chillers at the same time. But the item on the top left is one of our air-cooled chillers, that's $200,000. We have twins of those at schools, which ultimately with installation, you're looking at a 600,000 capital project. If the bottom right picture fails, this is your chiller pump system, what good is our new equipment? So, there's multiple parts to the puzzle, as I like to say, that make everything operate efficiently. This age equipment needs to be put on a plan. Some of the rusted and cool corrosion items are coming from the coast. A lot of it is accelerating faster on the coast than it is on the west side. That could just be just the salt air. I was in Dare County for a long time, and we were plagued with that down in Cape Hatters. Testing, balancing, as these building envelope items start to fail, gaps in windows, holes in doors, roofs need to be replaced. How builds were constructed and set up and tested and balanced to a certain standard is not the case anymore. Our units are overworking, we're not working to the most efficient way possible. And obviously, controls. I've got that in bold, because a lot of people don't understand a control system. We have three different control systems that control our HVAC systems, lighting controls, and our facility use. We got, you know, churches that use our schools all the time on the beach side. It tells when to schedule to come on, when to go off, and we have one campus in particular, and we have, we have added on to it so many times, we have three different control systems that monitor and control all the units on that one campus. It's very hard for our techs to figure out which control system controls what piece of HVAC equipment. And I will add, upgrading controls is a process. You need to pick a standard, stick with it, and you're looking at $300,000 a school, depending on the size. So, key findings, again, on the exterior, we're getting here close to the end, so I know I'm early on in the agenda, apologize, everybody. Some key findings I found is, we have a beach school up here, and it's very hard to establish just grass to grow. It gets, you know, it gets kid traffic, as you can imagine, all day long, probably before school, all the way through to after school. So, we, it's a playground, yes, sir. We have drainage issues, we have a gutter here that's missing halfway through, it's now created just a washout spot next to a school. It would be tied into what you see a stormwater drain underneath the parking lot, and that's the Topsail High School parking lot. As things start to settle, potholes get created, you start creating and having problems morph into things that can no longer be taken care of in a maintenance role. So, they're all, it's a big puzzle, and they're all tied together, but going back to the playground, something as simple as the dirt that comes in this school and how it wears on the floor and tracks into the classroom and creates more of a maintenance problem is an issue. Something as simple as some commercial walk-off mats can be implemented to help start to capture that if we can't get grass to establish, but ultimately, we need to get grass established. And I want to mention modulars. We have a lot of modulars, and I did not get accurate count, I can't speak to you on the total that we actually have in the district. Some of them are being used for storage, so it's not only a eyesore when you pull up to some of these schools, but it creates a safety issue, places where things can live and hide, that it's, we use them for storage, but also, it's a rooftop, so insurance and other costs are associated with them. So, some of these would be probably bringing to you as recommendations to remove, if feasible. Some key findings, when we want to talk, as we talk about modernization, I think of that as, we're touching a school, and we're giving it the look that you see in this picture. This picture is not one of our schools, but it's what we design each and every day in construction for what we think an educational space should look like nowadays. A lot of our schools don't mirror that, but you know what? It doesn't stop our strong leaders in this district to still give high-quality education to our students. But we need to think about this, it's furniture replacement in mass. How do we roll it out? How do, when do we roll it out? It's the casework, which is the build-out, the bookshelves, the interior systems of the classrooms, the technology needs, not just, you know, an interactive display, but the infrastructure, the Wi-Fi, the cabling, the fiber, all the stuff that Mr. Makin does behind the scenes in the quiet. And then, this is a balance, too, of not only when we modernize schools, but what else are capital assets? Their vehicles, their equipment, their mowers that mow that 830 acres, not all of it, but when we do mow, and that has to be balanced in this plan with a request from the county of all these other things that we're bringing and discussing in this facilities assessment, such as roofs, and when do you replace it? So, some of these challenges, again, I like to talk about this stuff, guys. So, some of these challenges are, first, is prioritize those projects based on severity. Whether that be life safety, structural, is anything compromised, you know, that takes away from the educational learning environment? You know, is there any budget constraints when we prioritize that? Because we have to adjust that with the capital, other capital asset needs. Some challenges are, we got over half the schools, not half, almost half of the schools are 1980 or older, and that's, you know, it's 2024, we, you know, that's been a long time. We've touched and built numerous additions, and we have various building systems on a single campus. We may have a square D electrical panel on one building and another in another building, and that's, that's, it's a lot, it's definitely a challenge. I like to say JFK once said, the time to repair the roof is when the sun is shining. And I take this multiple different ways, and I kind of take it as, if you plan and have the budget in place, that's the best time to repair, is when you have a plan, not when it's off during the middle of a storm, or whatever other, you know, a huge leak comes in. And I say that, because it's the last item there, is those challenges you've planned out around your team, One Pender, of when do you execute these projects? And an active campus is challenging. You don't want to disrupt students, and students are first. So, that's where I like the project team getting involved, how are we going to execute that project with, you know, a minimum impact to our students and staff? So, the next steps, again, this is just an example, I want to clarify that now, just so there's no confusion. This is a snapshot of a living document that is starting to be created, and it is a capital improvement plan, it's, I think, is a common, you know, approach to identifying the needs to the county by other school systems that start the list projects by school. So, we're going to develop a list of the projects and put it into that priority level of year one, two, three, four, and five, maybe start to draft in a later date, like a 10-year plan, just to kind of see, and budget total each column down to align with what the county funding is, which this supports that request to the county, and if we can align with that, the county knows that, hey, you know, I'm not going to not pay my mortgage when the car payment is due, or my car breaks down, there, some things do happen, but as long as we got a plan, the county knows, hey, this is what we're coming, this is consistent. If you look, I got roofing at, say, North Topsail, there's a $400,000, $500,000 request. The county may say, why don't you just do it in one year? You know it's cheaper to have one mobilization, do it in one year, and it just, it generates good conversation. There should be another slide, maybe? Okay, all right. So, I told you I'd circle back to this, and I just want to touch on a couple of key findings. I mentioned key findings and life cycles and stuff. If you will see, in the years of construction category, this Burgal Middle CFO, there's several schools that we've touched numerous times. They may be with remaining bond money, they may been to support the growth of the area at the time. It's, we are, in some of those cases, we may have no more built-upon area. So, there are some concerns there that we probably need to look at of how do we, you know, is there a way we can upgrade that campus or not? What can we do to, you know, to dial that in? Some of the years of schools, such as South Topsail, North Topsail, Malpus Corner, and Topsail Anadale, have similar roof issues. They were built near the same time, obviously, they're going to fail at that same time on that lifecycle cost. So, those are the years that we need to put downrange, when we're going to place, can't replace them all at once, but we need to show the county, or, you know, the ones funding this, that, hey, we got a plan, this is how we want to address it. Also, I put little asterisks on the left side, you heard me mention the coastal part of the school. A lot of the schools on the coast are, we're seeing accelerated wear on HVAC equipment, and the loss of the cools and the corrosion of that is really showing an impact on the load it's putting on the school. So, it's just something to kind of note, those life cycles may go up in priority versus someone that's, you know, on the western part of the side of the county. But this is just some things that I saw, it looks like it's in sequence of bond years till you see how the schools are kind of built together. So, I just want to say, I hope in 20 years, if I'm not here, somebody come here, and there's a lot more schools added to this list. So, that's just something to look forward to. Conclusion, this initial assessment, again, this was brief, me walking onsite schools, identifies critical issues with our facilities. Some immediate but long-term action is needed to ensure our students learn in, teachers teach in, a safe, modern, and well-equipped environment. I appreciate your time, and I'll turn it over for questions.
First of all, Mr. Gerganus, I think with the turnaround time that you did for this presentation, you did a great job, you knocked it out of the park, thank you, it's good information. I know that a couple of years ago, that we had Cheetahman Associates perform a mechanical evaluation for the district as far as trying to get together an HVAC maintenance plan, replacement plan. Was that helpful to you in any way that, okay, good?
Yes, ma'am. So, that was part of those, that collect and analyze the data, that's part of that plan, the Cheetahman Plan, and other previous facility needs assessments is where I'll start building that. So, those prior assessments are very helpful in actually planning and budgeting those numbers in priority.
Yes, sir. And I would be remiss at this point if I didn't call out some special guests that we have in the audience, and I'm so grateful that you guys are here, Mr. Brent Springer, Commissioner, and Mr. Michael Silverman, our county manager, welcome. And I'm glad especially that you were able to see this particular one, because I know, Mr. Springer, this one was of particular interest for you, you could ask for this. So, welcome. And, okay, board, are there any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I was HVAC contractor back in the day, and I did a lot of New Hanover County school work. Are we making sure, are we staying on top of these contracts for replacing, just say the HVAC equipment, are we staying on top of, they're getting this stuff permitted and inspected?
Yes, sir.
Or are we just, are we sure we are?
Well, it's going to be, and I will definitely follow up on it, yes, sir.
Because I've rode around before, and I've seen some equipment setting out, and I know for a fact that nobody got permitted, because it didn't, it could not pass inspection. It wasn't nothing big, but it was just small things that I noticed.
Okay.
And so, I'm just saying, just make sure we're staying on top of, get permitted and inspected.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, do you know that it has been, or you don't know yet?
I'll speak to the two months I was, I'm here, I know, I can speak to one small thing, that there was a metal building that was recently approved by the board, Pender High, and there's been a permit applied for on that. So, I just, that's one example, sir, so.
Because it's important to get that stuff inspected.
Absolutely. Yeah, okay. We're no different than anybody else, we all have to follow the same rules.
Okay, board, are there any more questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Gerganus, appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we're moving on to consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I think.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The consent agenda is approved, and we are now moving on to agenda item number 11, action agenda 11.1, Bordeaux monthly pay application.
So, again, we're back for pay application number five approval, so we can get it approved and send over to the county for processing of payment against the bond. This month's pay application against number five is $5,336,264.66. All this work that's identified on the schedule of values has been verified. Um, all this work that's identified on the Schedule of Values has been verified for myself and the project team that it works in place. Uh, this unique bill is, is rather larger than the previous months, just because GMP2, as it's been approved, the design, build, insurance, and the subcontractor, which is, we call it in, in the construction world, the SDI, is the sub-defaul insurance programs, those totals have hit, and they've been billed against in the Schedule of Values item, which is, is normal in construction. So other than that, just the Schedule of Value line items that's been touched is just more additional surcharge that's been brought by, brought by dump trucks to the job site, so they're just building accordingly. So I ask, uh, that staff recommends approval of this pay application, so we can submit to Pender County for payment. Do you have any questions?
Okay, Board, if there's no questions, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve. I will second.
Very good. Uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are approved, thank you. Item 11.2, Second Read Policy 6221.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, this policy was first read last, uh, in, in November. This brings our child nutrition, um, funding, not funding, child nutrition charges, things of that nature, back into federal compliance. Um, the highlighted or redlined areas that you see in your packet are changes that have been vetted by Mr. McPherson and, and others. So I just recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Um, gentlemen, do you have any questions? Okay. Have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion passes. Item 11.3, Second Read 3320-R, December.
Yep. This is, uh, field trip policy that we discussed in November. Uh, after we discussed that, uh, we took it to the principal, uh, GNP meeting, um, GPN, General Principal's meeting. Um, GNP is what you do. Uh, so anyway, we took it back to them, and, and they were, they were really, uh, concerned about not having two-way communication after that subsequent, so this is, the policy's been revised to be able to allow multiple field trips over a series of time. For instance, CTE programs, things of that nature that would, that would take place. We were, the principal's very adamant about, um, making sure that we had, uh, two-way communication. That's something that Dr. Breedlove and, and the team talked about as well. So it's okay to have one centralized permission form for the series of field trips, but some kind of two-way communication on the day before that field trip actually occurs, so that parents know, they're reminded again that, hey, my child will be off campus today. Um, so that's really the only change to the field trip policy that was made, was made in two sections.
I was about to ask, what does that change from now, but?
Yeah. It's, it would allow, previously every field trip had its own permission form. The only, the only thing it changes in this one, and this could be a phone call, this can be an email back, as long as the parent, you know, responds back to that. They felt it was important to have at least some level of two-way communication, uh, just to protect the district, uh, in case something were to happen.
Well, it replaces the need for like a paper permission slip and all this.
It can be paper, uh, but it doesn't have to be. It can be a phone call, it can be a message home. Um, um, we just felt like it was important for those parents to be able to have another reminder of the field trip that was coming up, so that they would know exactly what was happening.
So if it didn't pass, what would result?
Then they would just have permission forms for every single field trip. Which is what we've done in the past.
All right.
So apparently this would just make the process a little bit more smooth.
It would, it would. And, and these, our, our field trip policies also require us to take field trips to a central committee at the school level to be approved. Uh, so in theory, these field trips would be approved ahead of time at the beginning of the school year, or maybe the beginning of the semester. Um, so that's, that's another set of reminders for the parents.
Who approves them now?
Pardon?
Who would approve them now?
It depends on the nature of the field trip. Uh, so if field trip is locally, it can be, school administration approves it, uh, the committee approves it and moves forward. Um, there also is a system that we use that is called Travel Tracker.
Travel Tracker.
Yes. Um, that goes to the county office as well for approval, uh, that we approve those things. And basically, the approval is for the funding for travel, funding for the bus, the gas and, and the bus maintenance and things of that nature, mileage. If it's an out-of-state overnight trip, that requires superintendent approval. Uh, if it's out of country, that requires you guys' approval. That's really a 30,000-foot view of the process. It's a lot more complicated than that.
I just don't know if I understand the need for the change, but, okay. I may have to think about it, we'll see.
Well, I think this will be primarily for high school students who leave-
It would be.
On reoccurring field trips.
Yeah. Yeah. It would be, I would anticipate it being used on high schools. Um, you know, if you have a, a hosta club, for example, and they're going out and visiting several facilities uh, in the area, um, on a, on a, on a calendar basis, then, you know, I could see where it might help there. But that's, we still would require two-way communication, so that parents know what's going on with their child. What we don't want to have happen is a parent call the school, want to check out their child, and their child's not there because they're on a field trip, and that's the first time that they would hopefully remember the initial permission slip, but we also don't want that to happen.
So right now, they're using a blanket permission slip?
No, they're using a permission slip for every single trip they take.
Mm-hmm.
This would include, this would allow us to do a blanket field trip, but also a reminder to those families the day before, for example, the field trip was occurring.
Okay.
It, it's totally up to you guys. I, I can see, I mean, just my recommendation, I can see where it's, both have benefits.
I didn't see the need for it, I was going to let it die for lack of a second, or something, but it's okay now.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Okay. Uh, Board members, do you have any more questions?
Not I.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion we accept.
I will second.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, next is 11.4, Airmark Discussion. Mr. Hall?
Who do we have here from Airmark tonight? Y'all come up, please. Yes, Ms. Allen, thank you. Um, Ms. Allen, could you tell us briefly about the surplus that we typically get from our program and where the money goes, that kind of thing?
So currently, our status is the contract guarantees $800,000 from Airmark in return every year, and that's our current contract. Currently, we have an excess of seven months of fund balance, which requires by DPI, DPI's laws of school nutrition to have a spend-down plan. So we need to spend down in excess of $2 million, um, over, I mean, they, they want you to spend it down within a year, um, but we've had a spend-down program, uh, spend-down plan for the past three years. So we are in better financial shade than most districts in the entire state. So what we spend that on, and what our spend-down plan is based on, is currently, the top of our spend-down plan was to increase wages for all cafeteria staff members. Our goal was to get to an increase of $3 an hour for all Airmark staff. And just so everyone knows, Airmark staff is not a state employee. So a state employee requires a minimum payment hourly rate of pay of $15 an hour. So they were that far, $3 under, Airmark employees, were $3 under our state employees. So that's where the $3 an hour increase-
So, so with the three, that will put them at about, in most cases, about 15, is that right?
It will make the minimum payment at least $15 an hour for employees.
So do y'all think that that will help you with some of the staffing issues that happen? I would think it would.
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, what kind of money are you going to be talking about a year for that?
I'd tell you that. So for the beginning part of this year, we had started slower with this initiative, and we've been doing $1.50 an hour, um, to get, again, just to see kind of what that did for us and be conservative and fiscally responsible. For the remainder of this school year, to take the other $1.50 would be $90,000 in wages before taxes and benefits. So about $100,000 all in?
And then when you fully implement it, you're talking about $200,000, basically.
For a full year, right, about that.
Mm-hmm.
So there's also the matter of food quality, which we basically are demanding that Airmark up the quality without any more money, I should say. If we were to somehow take about $300,000 of that and add it to some type of, could you buy better food with it, is what I'm saying?
Sure, absolutely. So right now, again, for the, the second half of the school year, uh, our budget for food in Pender County sits at about $1.70. So if you, and that's again, that's across, that's blended across all different types of service, breakfast, snack, and lunch. So it breaks out differently depending on the different meal type. To increase that by 50 cents for the rest of the year would, for the rest of the school year, would cost the district about $420,000. So that's 50 cents, right? So if you're going $300,000, you know, you're probably looking at 35 cents addition per meal.
I just used that, so it didn't-
That's substantial.
So I took 800 minus 200.
Sure. Yeah, every 10 cents is worth about $86,000.
I just, I honestly, I think most of the public and everyone in here knows, a lot of our kids, in some cases, school lunch or breakfast is the only food that they get, it happens. So what that amounts to is, we're making a profit off of these kids, and I have a real problem with that. And it's also ruining some of the quality, because I mean, stuff has gone up, I know that. And y'all unfortunately have had to hear a lot about this, including from me, over the years, so. I just think that, uh, now I realize that, you know, that money is used for, usually equipment, is that right, Ms. Allen?
Well, I just, I want to explain too, that, you know, we are required to be self-sustaining in child nutrition. It costs a half a million dollars a month to run the program. So we have to make sure that we continue that, at least that profitability. And our goal is, and my goal since I've stepped into these shoes, is to make sure that we increase opportunities for, for children to eat, adding CEP, which means that kids eat for free, a- and certainly quality and for labor hours. But yes, a lot of that is equipment as well. We're looking at, we've got an RFP out now for one point, it's going to roughly run around $1.2 million to replace four schools serving once. And you all know, you know, you've been in the cafeterias, you've seen it, we've heard it. So we're trying to up the game in the cafeteria. Also, again, looking at modern stuff, we're looking at fixing the cafeterias, making them prettier, make them more appealing, nice furniture, so all of those things are in our spend-down plan.
So we either would have to choose more wages and better food, or a prettier cafeteria and better equipment, is that?
I think we have to prioritize to keep the program running, um, solvently. But I have, I have a firm belief that we can accomplish all of those things with a proper plan.
Yeah, we just, we, this has been going on for three or four years, and, you know, I get emails and stuff about it all the time, and... So I, I said 800,000, maybe that was an error, is 700,000 more of the surplus that, is that a safer number to use?
Yes.
You need 200 of it for wage increases-
That's correct.
-to fully implement that. All right, that leaves 500,000. So, could you do anything with 35 cents extra, like you just talked about?
Yes, sir.
Would it make a substantial difference?
Yes, sir.
Then I make a motion that we've somehow moved this around to increase that money by 35 cents. Would anybody care to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much for coming. Our staff will get with you on the details of this, and, because we got some figuring out to do, so.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our action agenda for tonight. Uh, right now, we are going to have comments from Board members.
I don't have any, because I got to get the motion out for the closed session.
Yes, sir. Uh, no, actually, Mr. McPherson has offered to read it. Are you okay with that? Okay. Well, we're going to start with our newest Board member, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you.
Cut your, Tom, hit your mic button.
Oh, sorry. Still new. First off, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Black, Rocky Pond Elementary Teacher, finalist in the State Music Educator Awards. Um, also, I'd like to thank my family and friends, and all the volunteers who helped me get through the journey to get here. Um, Ashley, Sandra, Shelley, and Craig, there's many more, but these are just four I would like to name. Um, just thank you very much. I'm just glad to be here and glad to work with all of y'all. Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
I have none.
You have none, okay. Uh, well, first of all, I would like to say, welcome, Mr. Reeves. We are very happy to have you up here with us. Um, and I would like to thank the Board for voting me in as Board Chair this evening. Um, I believe that we have a lot of growth and development to do, especially with our strategic plan, and I'm very grateful to the Superintendent for leading this initiative. I think that anytime that you have direction on where you want to go, um, it's definitely going to, um, give us a pathway to, um, to do even more for our district. Um, also, I would like to ask the Board if they would like to consider, I've always thought that we should have more represented, more representation in Raleigh from our Board of Education. I would like to put together quarterly visits to our state representatives as a team. I think that this will be necessary for letting Raleigh know exactly some of the issues that we are having problems with, that they could perhaps help us out with, and it also gives us a chance to converse with those people who are actually making, you know, the policies and laws that affect us here. And I will be the first to say, I know that our district is in the middle of making some very hard decisions. Uh, they are coming. Uh, we have to make decisions about, um, transportation, school bell schedules, um, bonds, and I want you to know that we are going to work together to get these initiatives done. And I am very proud of the team that we have up here, and again, I cannot say thank you enough for this, for this opportunity. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. McPherson. Yes, sir.
I would just like to thank Mr. Hall for his service last year of being Chair. I know that was, that's a tough job.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. I got nervous and I forgot you, Mr. Hall. I, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reeves, for being here. Congratulations. I am happy to have you. Uh, I am, want to say a special congratulations, uh, to Ms. Burns on being elected Chair. Uh, Mr. Hall, thank you for not only your services as Chair, but also for signing back up to serve as Vice Chair. Um, I thoroughly enjoy working with this Board. I think you guys, uh, work well together, and we're going to continue to work as a team to do great works for, uh, the citizens of Pender County. Um, I also would like to point out that, uh, this Board has worked extremely hard, uh, with your staff to do great work, and you're going to continue to do that. Um, and- And I take this opportunity to congratulate Mr. Springer and Mr. Smith on their swearing-in to the county commission. I think it's important. The school board, former school board members make up three seats on the current Pender County Board of County Commissioners. I think that's an important relationship. And so with that being said, that, that concludes my comments, and I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. And a word from our superintendent.
Well, first of all, congratulations, Mr. Reeves, on the becoming a member of the Board of Education. I do wanna thank Mr. Hall for his services as chair as well. Learned a lot from, from him, and thank you for taking my calls and, and that on weekends, nights, and, and, and other times. And Ms. Burns, I look forward to working with you as, as chair. Congratulations to you as well. And I know that they were here, but once again, congratulations, Mr. Springer as well, and Mr. Smith as well for becoming a board of county commissioners. With that said, I do wanna thank the board also for all of the time and energy that you spend in your role. A lot of the, the time is thankless, and people don't understand the amount of time just prepping for a board meeting and what goes into that all month long. And so I, I just wanna say, uh, we have a lot to be proud of in Pender County Schools, and a lot of that work behind the scenes that, that you all do and working with our team is just, uh, it's good to note, and just wanna say how appreciative I am to, to be, uh, be a part of it. With that said, I do wanna say that we are less than two weeks away in first semester, from the ending of first semester and going on winter break. And I just wanna encourage our students and staff to finish strong this semester. I wanna continue to encourage good attendance at school. And I do wanna wish good luck to all of our high school students who will be taking final exams next week. And we all remember the stresses of that and, and what that entails. And so I wanna wish them much luck and do well. I know their teachers have taught them well, and they will do well. To all of our students, staff, on behalf of Pender County Schools, thank you for your great effort in bringing the best to Pender County Schools each and every day. I hope that our students, staff, and families have a great holiday break, and wish everyone a fantastic 2025 ahead. Once again, I wanna congratulate our holiday card contest winners, students whose artwork was selected by the school system. Also wanna thank all of the students that entered the contest. And I, I, I know that we had upwards of fifty-plus cards that were submitted. And so many great pieces of art were submitted from students all over, and so I wanna congratulate their effort all around. He's not here tonight, but I do wanna give a shout-out to Mr. Fankbonner. And Mr. Fankbonner is our Chief Communications Officer. He couldn't be with us tonight. He's a little under the weather, and we wish him well. But while we're responsible for a wide range of, of communication responsibilities, I would like to point out the fantastic job that Mr. Fankbonner does on our weekly newsletter. That's been coming out now for, for quite a bit, and he has just done a fantastic job on that. And if you've not checked that out before, please take a look at it. It's emailed out, it's on our website, it's put on Facebook, on Twitter. It really gives a snapshot of the week of all of the great things that Pender County Schools does on a weekly basis. And so many pictures of students and the work that they're doing, how happy they are, and just the products that are created by our, our school system. And so it's truly good stuff. I know recently in the last week, you know, for example, we did a story on something that's new at Pender High School, and that's their recognition called the Order of the Patriot Award, where they send, teachers send postcards home, I think four a month, to students that go above and beyond in their classes. And at the end of the semester, each department basically fight for students that they wanna recognize, one male and one student from each department. And then, and then last week, they had the ceremony. And so the teachers got up, they spoke from the heart about what makes that student special and why they're being recognized. And so you have the parents that are sitting there, a really nice breakfast. Students in tears, parents are in tears, and the teachers in tears as they read about the students. And that's what Pender County Schools is all about, is the relationships that are built, and just that brought it all together. And what a momentum booster for Pender High School, and certainly something that we want to showcase about what Pender County Schools is all about. And we're doing that across, those type of things across the board. So you can see those type of things in the newsletter. So I wanted to, to point that out. And Mr. Fankbonner, if you're listening, thank you so much for the work that you do there. And that's time of, it's this time of year, mid-year graduation ceremonies. Wednesday, December the eighteenth, we have our first at four o'clock, Pender Early College at CFCC's North Campus and the BBNT Auditorium. And so, you know, we will put our, our, our gowns on and recognize those students there. Then we jump into our traditional schools. Friday, January third, mid-year graduation ceremonies. We have nine AM at Topsill High School, eleven AM at Heidi Trask High School, one PM at Pender High School, and then we finish the day at three PM at Pila on the Cape Fear Middle School campus. Our next board meeting is gonna be on Tuesday, January fourteenth at six PM. It's a regular board meeting. Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, we have our committee of the whole. Board members, this concludes superintendent's update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bree Love. Okay, now we will take a motion for closed session.
And I will make that motion. Mr. McPherson, if it's, uh, if you don't mind reading it, but also if you two are okay with it, I'd like to talk for a couple of minutes about Airmark's contract, which I think would be in closed session. If y'all could join us for that for a second. If that can be, can we legally do that?
I, I think we should have a brief discussion in closed session, but it should be permissible. Let's talk before we talk to them.
Okay.
Okay.
So what that means is y'all hang out for a minute before we leave, okay? But yes, I'll make the motion that Mr. McPherson is about to read.
I move that the board enter into closed session, subject to the advice from the Attorney Pursuant to North Carolina Jones Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen to eleven A one and A six, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under GS one fifteen C three nineteen, and to consider matters related to personnel matters. The board is also, will also enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, eleven A three, to consult the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina Journal Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen A one and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act twenty USC one two three two G and North Carolina Jones Statute one fifteen C four oh two, and to consider and give instructions to the board attorney concerning Locore v. Jordan.
Thank you. We have a motion for closed session. Do we have a second? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are now in closed session. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you everyone, and we are back. Is there a motion to come out of closed session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion approved. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the HR report?
I'm making motion we approve the HR report.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone.